All right, please rise to the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, welcome to the March 30th, 2023 meeting of the Phillips Town Planning Board. I went to the Knicks game last night and they don't do the pledge, they do the national anthem. And there was a woman named Ms. Songstress, I think was her name, and she was really good. We could actually have her do our, instead of the pledge, that'd be kind of fun to have the, maybe a board member should rotate saying the pledge, singing the national anthem. What do you think Dennis?
I don't think so.
You're not up for that? All right. All right, roll call please Cheryl.
Dennis Gagnon?
Here.
Announcer?
Here.
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 Here. All right, thank you very much. We have a quorum minutes from February. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make some motions.
Second.
Second.
Edits, deletions, corrections. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Cheryl, any correspondence of value to read?
Uh, I'm sorry, no.
None. Okay, let's start with the public hearing for Stepping Stones. Cheryl, would you do the abbreviated version of the announcement, please? Thank you.
Planning Board of Town, Phillips Town, New York will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 30th, 2023, starting at 7:30 PM at the Phillips Town Town Hall, 238 Main Street, North Carolina Road, to consider the following application. Stepping Stones, 25, Lady Blue Devils Lane, Cold Spring, New York, 10516, tax map number 16 dot 16 dash 1 dash 2, 0 dot 2, project, major project. Applicant is proposing to expand an existing daycare facility with the addition of a 1,820 square foot detached building, relocating an existing playground, and some additional parking spaces. Dated at Phillips Town, New York, the 16th day of February, 2023. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Sir, do you want to remind us your name and who you represent and all that?
Absolutely. Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering.
Okay, you want to just give a brief summary?
Yep.
I don't think it has to be an extensive summary of the project.
Absolutely. Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering here representing Stepping Stones. They have an existing daycare located in Lady Blue Devils Lane. Their existing building's just a hair over 3,000 square foot. They have a consistent waiting list, and what they'd like to do is expand their operation. They're proposing a new building toward the west of the existing building. It'll have three classrooms in it, office area of reception, similar to what they have now. The building will be one-story wood frame. It's going to match the existing area, exterior of the existing building in color and type of architecture. Right now, they have nine employees and about 40 kids. They'd like to expand that to 13 employees and a max of 60 kids. They have an individual well, they have a septic that's on site. We've done some metering of their water system. Their septic's approved for 800 gallons a day. They're currently using just a hair over 100. So as far as infrastructure goes, really no improvements that we're doing, other than tying the new building into the existing septic. So there'll be minimal ground disturbance for the construction of the new building. We had a site visit with the planning board out there, and this site is bounded by residential properties. Obviously, where the applicant is sensitive to the neighbors, and also the code speaks to a 20-foot wooded buffer between the commercial piece here and the residential properties. When we were out there, we saw a couple of pine trees that were in some, in some rough conditions. What we'd like to do is remove those trees and obviously fill in any gaps along that rear boundary with evergreen trees. Based upon trees that we've seen out there that need to be removed and replaced, we're probably in the area of 20 trees that will be spaced roughly 20 foot on center along that back row to fill in those voids and provide some screening and noise reduction from the playground. The, the original proposal we had had a pretty large playground that we kind of pushed into the back hill, noticing the grading, any potential of rock that we could encounter. We listened to the board, and we've actually shifted the playground more toward the left side of the, of the, actually the right side of the building, and slightly behind, to give a little bit more of a buffer to the residential properties. Other than that, we've shown a refuse enclosure in the existing parking lot. Originally, we thought about possibly expanding the parking, but just looking at the numbers and the way the traffic moves in and out for drop-off and pickup, we're going to maintain the existing parking. We meet code based upon our expanded use. So again, minimal ground disturbance to the, to the site. And just to give you a reference to what the building would look like, it's going to match the color and style of the existing building that's out there. Other than that, we, only update I have to give the board since we met last in the site visit is we were actually out on-site today doing some soil testing for the stormwater management system to mitigate roof runoff. Experienced great soils, standing gravel down to eight foot, no rock, no water, and it was, it was nice material. So from a stormwater standpoint, I have to get you some additional documentation for that design, and we have an application into the Health Department for the connection and analysis of their water use and the septic system that's on-site. That's it.
Great. Any members of the public here to speak on Stepping Stones? Please, sir, come up to the mic and share your thoughts. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the viewing public.
My name is Mike Reiner. I'm here with my wife Karen. We live at 56 Noelwood Lane. We've been there for over 30 years, and our property is tangent to the Stepping Stones. We have 200 feet on one side and 125 feet on the other, and then it turns into the McEwen property on the back side as well. So if you don't mind, I've sketched some notes, and I hope I don't drag it too long and get the hook if you need.
I'm sure we don't need a time limit tonight. Go ahead.
We'll see.
Oh, is he, is he that kind of guy? Okay.
We'll see.
All right, well, sir, you have, sir, you have five minutes and we'll go from there, all right?
More than enough. The, uh...
Okay.
So, we were there when the initial daycare came about. It was, I guess owned by the Leonard's. It was a small footprint, a few children, and a small playground. And we had talked about playgrounds during the initial installation, but we knew very little about the infancy of, infancy of childcare. So it developed the way it did. Over time, it expanded. What was a handful of children became much more. There was a second play area that was put onto the side of the property near our house. So I don't know that everybody has the same, we, we experience it daily, and I'd like to flesh out just a couple of things with regard to that, just to make it understood. One thing is that unlike a regular school that has a nine-month operating window typically, a daycare has a 12-month operating window. Unlike a school that has typically a day, an eight-hour day plus or minus, the daycare has an 11-hour day. So those are factors that if we begin to think about expansion, which is being requested again, I, I think the impact is even greater than it currently exists. So I believe the license allows 43 children on-site. That's a New York State figure that they have come about with, I think it's based on square footage, typically about 50 square feet per child. The original building's about 3,000 feet. The one being proposed, it says 1,825, but the paperwork elsewhere says 20, 2250 or something. So there's two numbers floating, but whatever it is, it bumps on 5,000 square feet. So if the license were to, if you do the math, there could be even more than 60 children there at some point. And to, to that point, if we're going to talk about design going forward, we should take that into consideration. And so if somebody would, if they want to commit to 43 forever, you know, that's one thing. If they did increase the request to go to 60 or even more, I don't know that, because the infrastructure, if this gets approved, if the infrastructure's in place, I don't know that they would have to come back to the planning board to simply populate it at that time. I don't know that. But, um, so the other thing about the playgrounds as we know it is that they typically get used on a good weather day, which is not today, the two hours in the morning and typically two-plus hours in the afternoons. That's about a four-to-six hour usage of playgrounds, which is probably a rotation of children from different age groups, et cetera, okay? It's not one class out there for four hours having a good time. Otherwise, I'd join up. The, uh, so what's, what's going to change is either, as more children become potentially involved, either, and our current design, either the density of use of those playgrounds will increase, or the hours of expansion of use on that playground will increase. And that, that is significant. So, um, what really is important is that the, the materials that are on, on the site plan, that the playgrounds are in the back, they're the closest to the residents, they've moved them closer than they currently exist, that's a real concern. Initially, trees were planted on the, not the back of the property, but on the side of the property where the, the most prominent playground exists. Those trees have since turned to mulch, basically. So it's, and we've learned something about trees. They're not, they're, they're, when, when they're healthy and good, and there's enough of them, the, they can be visually screening areas. I find them to be quite a bit less of any value, perhaps, for noise cancellation, as the documents in, in the site plans talk about, noise cancellation. With your permission, I have something, I have a 31-second capture that was done last Thursday. We were walking out of our house to travel to see my daughter. There was a quick capture of what was there at that time, and I'd like to play it for you now, if I could. It's a, it's an audio.
Oh, what, what is it an audio of?
It's an audio of the children next to our property.
Uh, I don't have a problem with that. Does Dominic have a problem with that? All right, anyone have a problem with that? All right, audio of fire.
Just, just for perspective, the video was taken 70 feet onto the, our property from the property line, and there were a clump of pine trees in the corner, so that we couldn't tell where the sound was coming from, but it's either one of the two playgrounds, and that would be either an additional 50 or 100 feet. So we're talking about that type of distance.
Okay. You weren't kidding. He's, he's hit seven minutes so far, so, uh...
I'm just warming up. The, uh, yeah, another, I have my technical expert. I've gone to a screen that...
Well, she finds the video. Won't you tell, this is about children playing?
This is a, a random catch of what we experienced.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, I'll turn on the sound.
Sounds quite peaceful.
It does. Is it up?
It stopped for some reason.
Yeah, we can still hear the kids playing.
The kids playing.
Okay.
It's just a quick capture. I, I could make the video available if you'd so like.
If you want to email it to Cheryl, it's more than welcome, too.
Thank you.
Okay, keep going.
So I think what that demonstrates is that there were, there were trees between the origin of the noise and where we were, probably 100 feet away. Did we sense any noise cancellation? I did not. And therefore, trees are not the only way to handle the issue, which is really central to our concern, and, and that's the noise going forward, okay? The, the documents talk about noise, whether it be the application for site plan approval, where it says, "Building or other facility shall be designed, located, and operated to avoid causing excessive noise on a frequent or continuous basis." There are, under miscellaneous standards, statements that say, "Structures shall be located, constructed, and insulated to prevent onsite noise from interfering with the use of adjacent properties." On page 14 of the miscellaneous standards underneath the application for site plan approval, it says, "Method for blocking noise shall be used where appropriate, and shall include fencing, walls, and natural buffers, such as planting with trees and large shrubs." So the noise is our issue, and I don't know where we can have the discussion on this later. I would like to ask, I, I would like to say that what has been offered so far, if you look at the site plan, are six trees along the back row. There's nothing along the other side which has fallen apart over the years, certainly didn't control the problems as growth in that daycare center occurred. So that the, my, my best recommendation, if we're thinking long-term and continued expansion, would be to relocate the playgrounds to areas other than where they are on the site plan at this point. I have ideas, I could share them with you, but you, understand? I'm curtailing myself.
You are, okay. We're, we're at 10 minutes, sir.
All right. So the other, the other thing that you could do, they have cyclone fences that, that, that enclose these areas. The trees are going to be 20 feet back, or 10 feet back, or certainly back. I have not heard any conversation about walls, a solid wood wall close to the source of the noise, maybe it could replace the cyclone fence. You could have shrubs on one side of it, trees on the other. It would be a good look. It would be much more effective than what's in place at this time. So there are options, and this is an opportunity to work together on this, because it's impacting to us, and I understand they offer a great service to our community, but the neighborhood also offers a great service to our community as well. So we'll meet a middle ground, I hope.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for Stepping Stones? Going once, going twice, have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, public hearing's closed. Any comments from the board on what we heard?
I think it's a compromise. I think it'd be good for the community, good for the business, good for the neighborhood. What that compromise is, I'm not quite sure.
Others? Thank you, Dennis.
During the site visits, didn't we talk about fairly dense vegetation along the border?
Right.
It's just, so you know, we have talked about this. I mean, we're not...
And to clarify, to clarify this, there's been a couple of iterations of the plan. The original plan was just a hair over 1,800 square foot for the building. Then we started looking at layouts of classrooms and things like that, and reception area, and that, that building size did bump to 2256. So there were two different numbers there, and that's the reason for the jump. Originally, in our site plan, we did propose less trees, so that is correct. And then upon our site visit with the board, we realized there are a number of trees that are in poor shape that we're going to remove and replace, and then in addition to fill in that wooded buffer. So I think we went from just a hair over six trees, that now we're proposing, I believe, 20 along the entire road.
Yeah, it's like you've got some on, on the site plan there, so.
And we did, we did pull that playground away from that rear hillside.
Right.
Not to grade that, but we're obviously, which we're sensitive to the neighbors and, you know, we'd like to, we'd like to work together with them.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm sure you can, I mean, I'm sure you can work this out. I don't like to see neighbors get off to a bad start, you know? But this is also one of those, we've had a couple of these applications lately where we, what are the two zoning areas here, Ron? We've got a commercial, where, uh...
Yeah, they're, they're in that OC zone.
You got an OC budding up against a...
Residential.
Residential. So, you know, we're, we're not without sympathy, but this is what happens when you run into these two, I mean, these two types of zoning have to meet somewhere, and so we have, we have to be sensitive to that also, that they are within their right. It is, that's what it's zoned for, and it, it's been zoned that way for a while. So we're not without, again, we're not without sympathy, but, you know, this is something that happens. So we, best thing we can do is try and work something out, okay?
I'm thinking, you know, other board members' comments. Heidi?
I mean, would it be possible to put up a wall that would block the noise?
When you think of wall, I'm thinking fencing. You know, you're probably going to want a close panel fence. Under, under your permit, can we go six feet on the fence in the town, on the site plan, without, I don't think you need a waiver on that, right?
What's the question?
We can do six, we can do like a six-foot fence in the back. I don't think we would need a waiver on that, right?
Six, is it six?
Yeah, I think it's per code. Every town's a little bit different. I just, I mean...
Okay, other comments? So, well, here's what I'd like, sir, there's not a back and forth. Do you have anything new to add? I don't, I don't want to do a back and forth on... Let me, let me handle that one. Okay. So what I'd like to propose is the following, if you wouldn't mind, sir. I would like to ask you to work over the next, whatever, between now and our next meeting with our engineer. You've heard the comments of the applicant. Ron, I'm sure has heard them around fencing for noise and sufficient trees for further visual blocking. I'd like you to just submit a revised plan with those, with those points in mind. We can then talk about sufficiency at the next board meeting, and if we all feel like you've made a sufficient move towards what Neil said was an accommodation, I think that we'd all feel pretty good about that.
Fair enough.
Okay. So if you wouldn't mind, then we'll pick this back up next month, and we'll just look at the plan from there. Ron, is that good with you?
Yeah, fine.
Okay. All good, everyone? All right, good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Dan's lumber, we're just, we're just voting on the resolutions. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
Okay. Ron, you want to just remind us about where we are with Dan's and the approval resolutions?
Yeah, the board's previously done all their administrative requirements. They've had a public hearing. Plans have been modified over time. They're now at a point where you can take action on, on both the SECA resolution as well as the approving reso.
All right, has everyone, that has been all distributed to the board members, so can I have a, can I have a motion to approve the neg deck on, for SECA for Dan's lumber?
So vote.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Okay, great. And the approving resolution itself that Ron has prepared, any, can I have a motion to approve that, please?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion on that. Any comments? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. I can sign them if we have them ready to go. Thank you very much. Anything else in that matter?
Yeah, there's one more thing. The, the issue of the tree removals.
Yes.
There is a letter that the board was considering issuing to the code enforcement officer to allow him to remove trees before the DEC deadline of April 1.
Okay, well, today is March 30th, best be getting shopping. Well, didn't we just approve the resolutions then? So what's the, what's the...
Just, you just want to accept the letter or recommend that be issued to the Building Department tonight?
Do we even need that, since we just approved the resolutions? I'm not sure we, I'm happy to do that, but it seems superfluous.
I think it would make it clear, just, just so that, that you don't need a signed site plan in order to clear the trees.
Okay, that's fair. Okay. Well, you want to just read briefly the, a brief version of the letter?
The letter just indicates to the Building Department that the project had proceeded to a certain point, and that there was no objection to clearing trees for the first phase, as I understood.
That's right, only phase one.
Is that good enough for everyone? Okay, can I have an approval of said letter? Thank you. Second?
Sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion passes. Chop your trees, you got 48 hours. Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
No noise. They're in the lumber business, they go. They must, they must know some people.
That's funny, that's funny. I'm, I'm signing, I'm signing. Hold on one second, we finish the signing process. Okay, thank you Cheryl. Okay, Bach. So we, we, I'm not sure we, you can, you can go up there, but we're going to just talk about the site visit, so I'm not entirely sure we're going to have questions for you. I'm going to just start off by, Ron, do you want to summarize the, the notes from the site visit?
Sure. The, the board conducted a site visit in early March. There were some concerns going in relative to wetlands issues and activities on the site, and the improvements that were being considered. The board did not find any significant concerns once they were on the, on the site. So the memorandum that you have in front of you merely summarizes the obligations of the code relative to environmental considerations and home occupation issues. The applicant had made commitments as to parking, lighting, things of that sort. So I think the board was generally satisfied with their understanding at the, at the site visit.
Okay, board members, any comments from the site busy one reason in public setting or another public setting? No one? Nothing, nothing that's hitting that threshold? Nothing? Okay. Well, I think we need to schedule a public hearing then, yes? Okay, have a motion to schedule a public here at the next board meeting? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second, all in, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you for the fastest meeting I had this week.
If you send me any more letters about endorsing the veterinary shop, we may take longer next time. So no more letters, no any more letters, we got it.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
These applications where we, we have people with puppies.
That's right.
Children, puppies, and historic buildings.
That's right, it's all good stuff.
Okay, okay, we get it.
All right, Garrison Golf Course, PDD Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. We're here to discuss the completeness of the DEIS. So Aaron, you want to just summarize where we are?
Sure. So back on March 6th, we, Ron and I issued a memo for the completeness review, the initial completeness review. The meeting for the 16th was canceled. That put a wrench slightly into things.
It was not canceled, we didn't have a quorum, let's just be practical. We did cancel it, but we didn't have a quorum, so we decided to postpone it.
It was postponed, but that did kind of throw a wrench into the timing issues for adopting an EIS in the completeness stage. So your attorney, the other attorney that's not here tonight, did arrange with the applicant to extend the completion review, the completeness review timeline until the April meeting. The memo that Ron and I issued, you know, was pretty extensive as far as the comments. The document was pretty well put together, but we did notice some things that were not addressed from the scope, certain things that could be elaborated on to be more clear, to make sure that the, everything that the scope covered was presented in understandable format for the public to understand. They went ahead and did resubmit on the 20th of March. We haven't gone through those revisions yet. Those revisions were against our comments from March 6th, so we will take a look at those between now and the next meeting. We did ask the board, since the meeting wasn't held last time, to offer any comments they had by the 20th in an email to Cheryl, and I think Laura responded with some comments, or one comment about human health chapter. I don't think we received any others. I don't know if you wanted to discuss any tonight from the board, but the applicant is prepared to address any additional comments by the April submission deadline, and then we can talk about how those, if those are adequately, adequately address our comments and your comments at the April 20th meeting, and hopefully be prepared to declare it complete for public consumption at that point, and schedule a hearing, and issue a notice of completion.
Great. So Dominic, why don't you remind the board?
But tonight, I'm sorry, but tonight, since this was, the job of yours to do on the 16th was to, our recommendation was to declare it incomplete, so you can go ahead and do that tonight, just as you would have done.
Dominic, do we have to declare it incomplete, or do we just wait for it? Dominic, do we have to declare it incomplete, or do we just wait for it to be complete at the April meeting?
So, there, there is a timeframe under SEACRA for reviewing a draft of an, or a proposed draft of an environmental impact statement, and that timeframe for an initial submission is supposed to be forty-five days, and so Aaron was referring to the fact that Steve Gaba, you know, given the fact that there was no meeting because of the lack of quorum, arranged for an extended time period for the board to provide its formal comments for, for that. Bear in mind, however, there, there is no default approval, you know, so it's not as if, you know, the forty-five days passes, and if the board doesn't provide comments, it's not as if like the document is deemed complete by default, or, or anything like that. But nonetheless, to make sure, you know, that SEACRA timeframes are being complied with, it's always good to have an applicant's understanding of how the process is going.
Do we really need to vote? I don't think we've done that before, to vote its incompleteness, that seems like a strange...
You should, because the, the SEACRA regulations do provide that the board is supposed to determine...
Okay.
...whether or not the document is ready for public consumption.
Okay, but with the proviso that you...
I got around to answering your question eventually, so I apologize.
Totally fine, no, totally fine. So, I'm fine, I think we can do a couple of things. First of all, you can ask board members if they, they do have any other comments they want to submit. Secondly, it's clear that you have, you and Ron have shared with the applicant your additional comments already, and you guys have that, and hopefully those are modest in their, their requirements and capacity needed. And thirdly, I'm happy to vote for incompleteness, again, it seems like a strange thing to do since we'll be at completeness at some point. But let's do the first one, board members, any additional comments on the completeness or lack thereof of the DEIS? Just look around, anybody, anything to say? No?
I was okay with Ron's and Aaron's review.
Okay?
Yeah, it was a very thorough review, but there was also a very thorough response to, to the review, so.
You've been a great teacher to have.
Park before the horse.
That's a little, it's a little card, card horsey, yeah. All right, double compliment, very nice. Anyone else? Anything else you'd like to see in the DEIS that is not there? No? All right. So, I'm happy to, were there any questions from the applicant on what was asked for for completeness purposes? No, clear? Fine. So, let's, I'm happy to do this perfunctory vote, it's an odd one, in my opinion, but I'm happy to do it, because it's not much skin off my back, and I enjoy asking for, for a motion, so can I have a motion to declare the, the DEIS at least incomplete at this point?
Yes.
Okay, Peter, second?
Second.
Okay, any comments about its incompleteness at this point? Okay, we'll get to completeness, that's why I'm saying at this point, I, it's not, not a judgment call. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, so, Dominic, it is deemed incomplete at this point?
Yes, but if I understood Aaron correctly, they've already submitted a revised draft, so that document is under review.
Correct.
When it comes before the board, the board has thirty days, unlike the first cut at it, where the board has forty-five days, the board will have thirty days.
Starting from what date?
Well, that's a good question, because they kind of have gotten ahead of this particular vote, so...
Yes, so what was the date it was submitted at, Aaron?
That was March twentieth.
March twentieth, so thirty days is...
The next meeting.
Right? What's the date of our next meeting?
Twenty.
Twenty.
On the twentieth, okay, so, fine, we, so...
You're fine.
Okay, good. So, we'll, we'll, we'll deem its completeness, we'll adjust it, we'll determine its completeness at the next board meeting. So, board members, you have your homework to review, you've got two weeks, two and a half weeks, any other things you, yes, ma'am?
Sorry, so, so we're getting your AKRF's comments in its entirety for, on the seventh, when your documents are coming through, or you're just going to send them?
So, we'll have a memo in advance of the twentieth that analyzes their responses to our initial memo, whether or not they've addressed the comments, and they'll also, I think they're going to plan to provide a response to your comment by the deadline, right, for, okay. So, we'll take a look at that, too. So, between four-six and four-twenty, we'll have a revised memo if we're ready to...
Hopefully, it's a lot earlier than four-twenty.
Yes, it will be.
We're going to need it by the seventh or so for us to read it.
We need time to review it.
Sure, yeah, we can get it earlier.
Well, just get it on, just get it on our date that we, the Thursday before, so we can read it.
Thank you.
Because we've unfortunately had too many times where we...
Um...
Does that not work?
The thirteenth?
Whatever the date is. Cheryl, tell, tell Aaron what the date is.
The physical packets, it's the sixth.
That's the deadline by, for the applicant to submit.
Yeah, well, that's...
Would you like a memo from us?
And she distributes that stuff on Monday, the following Monday, to us, and then we, we go into full study, complete, we quit our day jobs for two weeks while we, right? Is that what everyone does?
Yes.
That's, that's, is that only just me? Okay.
So, the week of the tenth, would you like us to have our memo?
I think what, what Laura's saying on behalf of all of us is, around the date, which is the Monday, is when Cheryl distributes things to us. That would be great.
We can work with that.
If that's not going to work for you guys, figure out what, what does work.
We've, we can do that.
Okay.
And I'll also add in that memo, if we're ready to deem it complete, what comes next as far as notice of completion and...
Well, I think it wouldn't be the world's worst thing if we want to chit chat for a few minutes now while we're talking process. Do you want to just give us a pronoun of what that looks like?
Sure.
Either of you or Dominic?
So, if, if we are ready to declare it complete, I'll also prepare a notice of completion that you can consider that night at the meeting. We could talk about setting a hearing for the DEIS at that meeting, which will have to go into that notice of completion with a notification of when it is, where it's going to be held, the, the time and date. There'll be a publication in newspaper at least two weeks before that hearing, and that'll begin the formal DEIS comment period, which can range from thirty to sixty days, according to the regulations, so we can discuss what the board feels like as far as a comment period, and go from there.
Can we imagine holding a comment or a public hearing on the eighteenth of May?
That could work.
Or is that too tight to let people comment?
It, no, that, that, the, the, the public comment period has to be a minimum of thirty days, and that include...
No earlier than thirty.
No, no, it's not so much that, it's just that it has to at least include up to thirty days, and so the, there has to be a minimum of written comment period as well of ten days, and so I believe in a public hearing on the eighteenth, as, with a written comment period, that would extend for at least ten days beyond that, would satisfy that requirement.
You guys come back to us and tell us whether we should do it in the May meeting or the June meeting.
And we'll lay out dates for it.
Just give us a sense of what, I want to, as, as, I think I've tried during this period, focus on transparency and accessibility of the public without being unnecessarily constrained in time, so let's, let's figure out what's appropriate for both the public and the applicant.
In addition to Aaron's comments, I would just note, and, so that everyone is aware, that when, when the board does deem the document to be adequate for public review, complete and another, another way of saying that, the document itself and all of the plans have to be placed on the website, whether, I'm not sure if that's the town's website, or if it's the applicant's website.
I think it's Kim Connor's website, as far as I understand.
So, so, you know, that, everything has to...
Our town board member did not laugh when I said that.
We just hired another company, we made our website, we approved it last night.
Fantastic.
Wow.
All right.
That's great. It's Cheryl's website now, no?
Yeah, and the point is, when the notices are ready to go out, the, the link itself has to be live, so...
Yes, understood. Laura?
At the next meeting, can I just ask that we walk through just the process, just so that we can kind of articulate that to the public...
Sure.
...as the lead up to the hearing?
Yep.
Just so that we know what we're focusing on and what we're going to be discussing.
In fact, I wouldn't mind that if it's in writing also for the public and for us.
Memo will be pretty comprehensive on that.
Good. Others' comments? Thank you, Laura, good comment. Anything else? Nothing else? Well, I think the business of this topic is done then for the evening, anything else on this topic?
Not unless the applicant has anything further.
Yeah, okay. All right, great, thank you. Let's do our final piece of business, Hudson Highlands Reserve. We're talking about the, approving the alternate road standards tonight after the approval by the town board. Ron, you want to remind us the situation with Hudson Highlands Reserve?
Right, the, the last item that the applicant had to resolve with the town board was the getting an authorization to allow twelve percent road grade for the, just the entrance road itself from Route nine up into the project site where the development occurs. The town board had since taken that action, so it's now back in your hands, and the applicant is seeking to have a public hearing set for the April meeting to move their project along.
Dominic, anything to comment on?
Nothing further at this time.
Okay. Board members, any questions about setting a, a public hearing in April for the preliminary subdivision approval for Hudson's Reserve?
I was just saying, there were a lot of outstanding comments made. Are we going to be able to, are those, can all be addressed?
Well, first of all, good evening.
Oh, this is, this is AKRF's memo, so let's, let's ask Aaron about the memo he wrote.
Yeah, so I, I wrote a memo to just remind the board about the SEACRA process. We went through an EIS process, we concluded it last summer with finding statement, and within that finding statement, which the applicant was partly involved in, in reviewing and comfortable with, and, as well as the board, there's several commitments that were made to, to address certain environmental concerns, so I just wanted to raise that to the board to make sure that they're aware that those can be conditions of approval, they can be something that you ask for as you review the project now. You know, there's, there's specific language taken right from the finding statement quoted in that memo to organize by topic, that I think is useful to, you know, understand what might be needed going forward as we are in the next stage of this project now, the subdivision review. I don't know if the applicant had a chance to look at that, if they have anything to say, maybe we can give them a chance to eventually, but that's what the purpose of that memo was.
Okay, you, feel free to comment on that, Mr. Rourke.
Yes, if I may. Obviously, there were two condition precedents to, to reach this point after having the adoption of the finding statement. One, of course, was the zone change amendment, which was required so that the subdivision application could move forward, because, of course, included a land that needed to be rezoned. That was done. The second condition proceeding was obviously in fulfillment of the finding statement that was adopted by the planning board, which was that the means of public access was to be off of Route nine. Obviously, that required action by the town board, and that was to receive approval for an alternate road standard. That was the subject of a public hearing before the, before the town board, and public hearing was closed, and the resolution was adopted unanimously to grant the alternate road standard. So, that complies with what I understand to be the conditions precedent to the scheduling of a public hearing. Yes, there are comments, but those comments are not conditions precedent to the scheduling of a public hearing.
Do you want to say something?
I, I, I wasn't sure if the, finding a, an entity to hold the conservation easement was kind of by nature of a condition precedent. It, it sort of sounded like that from, from the memo, but if it isn't, it isn't, so...
Ron, want to comment, or is it Dominic talking?
Yeah, I'm talking about...
Someone's talking.
Yeah, if you're looking at the memo, page four, talks about that, it's specifically quoted from the finding statement that pursuant to the town code, conservation easement must be granted to the town with the approval of the town board, or to a qualified not-for-profit conservation organization or other government body acceptable to the planning board. Construction of the project will not move forward without a designation of an easement holder by the project sponsor. The planning board will have the ability to require that the designation of an easement holder be either a prerequisite to or a condition of future site plan subdivision approval. That language implies that it comes later. Yeah. That's, that's not something that...
We're not, we don't, we don't need back and forth.
It was just a question. I, I, I was just, it was just a question.
It's a good question, and it's a good question.
Thank you.
All right, we're, we're here to schedule, schedule a public hearing at the April meeting for the subdivision approval. Is that a proper step there, Aaron?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Motion to schedule the public hearing on the April meeting. Do you have anything else that we can't, that would hold us up from doing that? I mean, we're going to have the Shakespeare Festival, but that's going to be just a completeness review, that'll be pretty relatively quick. We have the BACH public hearing, hopefully not all thirty letter writers will be here telling us how much they like dogs and cats. Otherwise, I see no reason not to schedule a public hearing in the April meeting. Can I have a motion of that effect? Thank you.